Hello?
Hi.
Okay, uh, what's your name?
Randy Woodley.
Okay, and...
Valley Y.
Okay. And you're from...
Tatum, Texas.
Tatum, Texas. Okay, um, I got a call from Bobby Werther that told me a little bit about your situation, but, uh, today I would just like for you to tell your story and maybe we can assist you in getting out across the diaspora and, uh, letting people know about, uh, what your grandchild had to go through with.
Okay.
And, uh, could you, before we get started, uh, you are the grandmother of, what's the child's name?
Michael Trimble, better known as Tink, T-I-N-K.
Okay, and you're the grandmother. Uh, I watched some of the video and I read some of the write-up from the school and the school board, as well as some of the law enforcement comments, but, uh, what I would like to ask is, is the mother involved with the case or just you handling everything or how does it work?
The mother is not involved in his life at all. I have custody, and I've had custody since he was four months old. He is now four years old.
Okay, that's good, because people was asking me about the mother, so that's why I put that up front. So, could you just, rather than me trying to give you an interview, just explain to me and the people that have watched this, uh, video, uh, your situation and what you've gone through, uh, dealing with your grandson child?
Sure. Um, earlier in August, as a matter of fact, it was August 1st, um, I had an appointment to go and register him in Head Start. Um, I went to register him in Head Start and there was a question about his, uh, pimp. And they stated that his hair was too long, um, as far as his dress code was concerned. So, I went and spoke to the principal, and at that time, the principal, uh, was really trying to help me, and she was trying to figure out a way that people could attend school. So she told me that I could break his hair and pin it up, or I would have to cut it. And so, um, I then went with the superintendent, I spoke with the superintendent, and he also gave me those things to us. He told me that I could braid it and pin it up, or cut it. And so, I know that there are transgender students that go to the school, so then I asked him about his transgender students. And he told me that those students are protected by a law that was passed in Washington DC. And then I asked him, well, you know, does that diminish my grandson's right to wear his natural hair? And he proceeded to tell me that if I was that passionate about him wearing his natural hair, that I could send him to school in a dress. And when asked, he needs to be prompted to say that he's a girl, and that would show that he is transitioning into becoming a transgender. At that point, I was totally appalled, because I felt like he wouldn't have given, uh, Caucasian woman that option. I thanked him for his time, and I told him that I would be fighting him on this one. And he told me, many have tried.
What was his name, what was his name, if I may?
His name is J.P. Richardson.
And he...
He's the Tatum School District Superintendent.
Okay, okay, got you, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Um, so, fast forward, um, school started, I believe, don't quote me, but I believe August 14th. And so, on August the 13th, I went ahead and had his hair professionally braided to go to school.
That was 20, that was 20, that was 2019, right, 2018?
Oh, that's 2019, that's just a few months ago.
Right, okay, I was like, sure, okay.
Yeah, all of this is very current.
Right.
So, I paid to have his hair braided, and I sent him to school on the first day of school. And when he came home from school, he had a note in his bookbag telling me that he was still out of compliance because his braids were too long. So, um, I went ahead and started pinning up his braids with bobby pins. But now, this is a very active, normal, four-year-old little boy, and he would come home and complain that the bobby pins was hurting his head. And so, um, I started writing posts and taking pictures of the way that I would send him to school every day. Every day I would, uh, take a video or take pictures of him to show that he was well-groomed and well-maintained. Um, I started writing posts on Facebook, and I'm also a part of Black Mothers, uh, with Black Sons. And I posted my story, just a small post, in that group. And one of the ladies in the group contacted me and asked me if I would like to start a petition, because we were just really all very angered that this superintendent suggested that I put my black son in a dress. So we started a petition, and, um, so far, it's grossed over nineteen thousand signatures. I continued to write a post, and I continued to send my son to school. Um, he was really being, um, targeted, because I'm not from this town, and he was just not enjoying school. Um, and this is his first time in school, because it's Head Start. Um, the more I would take to Facebook, the more problems we would have from the school. So, I contacted an attorney, I filed a complaint with the ACLU, I notified the NAACP. Once I got my attorney, um, he told me that they were violating my grandson's civil rights for freedom of speech and expression, and that I could go ahead and send him to school the way that I felt most comfortable. Because, see, I was getting his hair braided, like, twice a week, because he has very fine hair, so his hair would not hold the braid.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I started sending him to school in his ponytail. Um, and I found that the school's dress code had all of these different hairstyles that were listed and targeted for young black men, such as the word puffballs. Um, there's no other race that can wear puffballs. They can't have a mail bun, they can't have a ponytail, they can't have a rat tail, or a duck tail. And so, after doing a little investigation of my own, I found that the superintendent had a problem with black men in dreadlocks. Now, I wear locks, I wear very long locks, my hair's been locked for almost five years now. And so, he felt, the superintendent felt like, if he could name all of these styles that young black men would have to put their hair in, in order to continue to grow their locks, that would stop them from wearing their locks. So I contacted an attorney, and we went from there.
Mm-hmm.
Once I sent my grandson to school in his ponytail, they would call me every day and tell me that I have to come and pick him up, because he's out of compliance. Either I come and pick him up, or they would have to keep him in the office, and he would have to do his lesson in the office. So, I opted to keep him at school and have him to do his learning in the office. Um, I found out that my grandson was in a classroom, unattended, with no supervision, a four-year-old, and was not, didn't have any lesson. He, he was just sitting in there idle for seven hours. And this happened every day. This, this, this went on for two weeks. Every day I would send him to school, and every day they would call me, and I would tell them, no, he has to stay at school, you know? Um, because I felt like he was in compliance, he was in compliance with his First Amendment rights, which state freedom of expression. His ponytail was not making, uh, class disruption, it was not a disturbance to anyone but the school staff. Um, and so, I continued to send him to school. I started a protest, and I went out and I post, uh, purchased my own poster boards, my own stakes to, um, hammer into the poster boards, and I started a protest, and I protested. And once I protested, the whole movement, because the, my movement is called The Village, so my whole movement just took off, it just became, um, worldwide, and we were on CNN and, uh, The D.L. Hughley Show, and The Russell Simmons Show, and we were on, in LA Times, just everywhere.
Right.
So, I started getting a lot of television, um, coverage. So I made the city very angry, I made my town very upset. And on October, and I never, I've never driven my grandson to school, he's always caught the bus from in front of my home. The bus actually pulls up in my yard. And so, I would continue to send him to school. Um, and they contacted my attorney, and told, oh, my attorney, that they were going to expel him. And so, my attorney explained to them that Texas law says that you cannot expel a student between the ages of six and ten unless they bring a weapon. And my grandson didn't have a weapon, he had a ponytail. And, and so, I would send him to school, and they would call me and tell me that he is no longer a student there, and that I needed to come and pick him up. And by the, um, advice of my attorney, my attorney told me to tell them that I was on my way, but when I got there, I needed a letter stating why they were going to kick him out. And so, every day they would call me, and every day I would tell the principal, I'm on my way, but when I get there, I need a letter on letterhead stating why you're going to kick him out. And they refused to give me a letter, they refused to put it in writing, so I continued to send him to school. On October 15th, I sent my grandson to school at 6:45 when the school bus came. The school bus, um, came back at 3:45, but my grandson wasn't on the bus. And when I realized that my grandson didn't get off the bus, I began to cry hysterically, because two weeks prior, uh, white men in my community put on Facebook that, a direct threat about shooting my grandson. And this was a thirty-five-year-old white man. And so, um, when my grandson didn't get off the bus, I was crying, I called the police, because, you know, I, I just knew the school wasn't a part of this, because they hadn't called to tell me they wasn't sending him home. So when I contacted the police, the police officer that took the call was very nonchalant, and I'm just crying. And, um, I told him, you know, my grandson didn't get off the bus, and he knew exactly who I was, because again, you know, I'm all in the media. And so, said, well, give me a few minutes and I'll try to find him. And I'm like, what? You know, aren't you gonna take a report? So, um, I get off the phone with him, I'm calling around, I call my attorney, I'm just crying, and then the police never called back, so I called them back. And when I called them back, he said, oh, well, Ms. Woodley, your grandson is at the school. And I said, what? He's at the school? Why didn't they send him home? And he says, well, you just need to get up here and get up. So, I go up to the school, and I walk in the school, and there's two police officers, my grandson and the principal.
What time is this now?
I'm sorry?
About what time is this, a date?
Okay, so, he gets home at 3:45, this is about 4:20.
Okay, okay.
So in about forty-five minutes, I couldn't find my grandbaby.
I got you, okay.
And I walk into the school, and I ask the principal, why did you guys put him on the bus? Because I'm still very hysterical. And the police officer said, um, excuse me, but before you go any further, I need to tell you something. And he told me that I was being issued out a criminal trespass warning, and that he needed me to sign it. And I told him I wasn't signing anything, and I asked him, why am I getting a criminal trespass? Like, I've never been belligerent, I've never come up here, I've never done anything indignant, and you guys withheld my grandson? Well, come to find out, that was gonna be their way of kicking him out of school, because if they could give me a criminal trespass, then that meant that I could no longer, um, get him to school if they stopped the school bus from picking him up. So my grandson's last day of school was October 15th. On October 21st, I turned fifty-one, and we had a school hearing with my attorney. And I had to get permission just to go to the hearing, because it was on school property. And so, on October 21st, we have this hearing.
Who, who granted, who granted, who granted that permission for you to go on the school campus?
Well, the superintendent, because the hearing was already planned.
Uh-huh.
Um, and so, for my attorney to fly down from California, and the ACLU was in attendance, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Crown Act, but that's a, a legislation that was passed that you cannot discriminate against natural hair, and that was passed in California, New York, and New Jersey. But they have adopted my movement, so they had written a letter, um, the NAACP was there, so the superintendent pretty much had to lift the CT order for me to go to it.
Okay.
Because it was because of me, the hearing was, you know, brought by my attorney.
Right.
So, um, at the hearing, they refused to look at the evidence, they refused to even consider their own state educational law, they refused to listen to the ACLU and to look at all of their exhibits, so they voted at that time that they would not allow my grandson back in school. Well, while we're in the hearing, I get a call telling me that my son is being arrested. Now, he's right outside the, the building, and this, this police officer is arresting my son. So I leave out of the meeting to find out what's going on with my son, because I know that I'm in a racist, deep south town, and I need to be out there with my baby. So I go outside, and this police officer is hollering at my son, um, and he has him in handcuffs, and I'm asking him, what is going on? Why is he in handcuffs? You know, and he tells me, you know, Ms. Woodley, if you don't bag, bag up while I'm handling official business, and I'm like, I'm not in your way, so I'm asking you, what did my son do? And he says, he has marijuana on him, and I'm like, no, I know my son, I know my son doesn't have marijuana on him. Well, I can smell marijuana, and I'm like, wait, timeout. First he has it on him, now you say you can smell it, you know, what are you doing? You know, and this is the same, this is a police officer that had, the one that tried to issue me the CT warning, this officer is just, you know, we have three officers, three or four officers in our town, all of them being of Caucasian race. Um, my son and myself is out protesting, so they know who we are, and he's just trying to start commotion. So, he, he grabs me and handcuffs me, and puts me in the back of the car. And I'm screaming, saying, can somebody please go in the inside and get my attorney? Because my attorney just is not aware that now I'm being detained in a black, in the backseat of a car. So, um, the police officer that put me in cuffs, he pat me down. I mean, he didn't call for a female, and the chief of police is a female, he didn't call for her to come and pat me down, he patted me down, in cuffs, he puts me in the back of the police car, I'm crying, I'm telling him, it's my birthday, what are you doing? I have a hearing. He radios his chief of police, she tells him, it's not gonna look, oh, well, there's somebody outside recording. One of the women that was at the meeting is recording it live, and she's letting the police officer know, you're going live, what you're doing to this lady, you're on Facebook Live. So he calls his superior, and I'm in the back of the car, and I, I just see him on the phone. So he calls his superior, and his superior tells him, like, listen, that's not gonna look good if you arrest her. So, he lets me out of the car, um, he handcuffs me, they take my grandson, I mean, my, I'm sorry, excuse me, they take my son to jail, they charge him with marijuana on a school property, they tow his car, the hearing goes on, um, I leave the hearing, it has been concluded, they decided they're not going to reinstate my grandson. I go down to the police department, uh, to the sheriff's department, to the county jail, to get my son.
How, how old is he?
My son is twenty-five years old.
Okay.
He's twenty-five. And what they were going to charge him with, they couldn't. The sheriff, the deputy says that when the officer brought my son in, he had a clear plastic bag with one seed in it, no marijuana, a seed, a seed, a single seed. So, they told me if I pay a hundred dollars, he can get out. I paid the hundred dollars, me and my son came home. Um, my next protest was scheduled for four days later, October the 25th. I was sitting in my home, just myself and my grandson, because my son doesn't live here, it's just me and my grandbaby. And I was in my home, and my protest was supposed to start at 6:30 in the evening, because I wanted to do that protest during a football game, during, you know, uh, it was a home game, and I, I scheduled it to go on during, uh, the beginning of the game, so as other people were coming in. So at about five o'clock, I'm at my house, and I get a knock at the door. I look outside, and there is two sheriff's cars and Tatum Police Department. Now, Tatum, I don't live in the city of Tatum, I live in the county. But, so Tatum is not even supposed to come up this far, but they're sitting in my yard. After I had gone to the police chief and explained to her that I do not feel comfortable with this particular officer, the way that he's handled me, my grandson, that I know that his wife is a school teacher, that he is too emotionally involved, I am suing the school and have a problem with the police department, I don't feel safe. And, and the chief of police told me, I, I wouldn't have to come in contact with them. Well, October 25th, they come to my house to arrest me. They knock at my door, um, I open the door, and he, one of the sheriff's officers asked my name, I told him my name, and he immediately grabbed my hand. And I ask him, sir, what are you doing? And he says that there is two warrants for your arrest. And I said, for what? I mean, sir, I've never been in trouble, so I have no idea what this is about, two warrants, and I tell him, listen, it's me and my grandson, my grandson just laid down for a neck, what are you doing? And I'm standing in my front door, and I have on a nightgown. I proceed to tell him, sir, you must have a, there must be a mistake, like, I don't, I don't even jaywalk, like, I mean, there must be a mistake, and he tells me, no, there's two warrants. The warrant was signed right before five o'clock. And the protest was supposed to start at about 6:45, so it's all coming together in my head. Um, I asked him, what was I being charged for? I never seen a warrant, but they told me that they would tell me once they get me downtown, downtown. Um, I'm crying, I mean, I can't tell you, sir, how hard I'm crying, because I've never been in trouble with the law, like, I'm just crying hysterically. And I tell him, my grandson is here, and he says, well, we'll let you call somebody to pick him up. They had contacted CPS when I was sending my grandson to school, and CPS came out there, they interviewed my grandson, and they found that, according to the CPS officer's report, because I have a final report, she said that they, when they got to the school, they found my grandson in distress, in a classroom, unattended, and crying. They went, the school didn't realize that when they made a false complaint, that they were going to interview the child first, you know, they, they're gonna interview the child, and my grandson happened to be at school, so the school was caught out of compliance, because my grandson was in a classroom by himself, with no supervision. And then they came to my home. Once they came to my home, um, and I know it sounds like I'm backtracking, but I'm gonna get back to my arrest. But when they came to my home, um, they did their walkthrough, they took pictures of my food, they took pictures of my home, they took pictures of my weapon, um, they actually came with me to retrieve my weapon, they took pictures, my weapon had a safety on it, it was in a, in a case, they considered the matter closed that day. I said that all that to say that when the police came to my home, they had already contacted CPS to try to get them to come get my grandson.
What is, what, 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 what is CPS, for the record?
I'm sorry, CPS is Child Protective Services.
Okay, I need that, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, I said all that to say that when they came to my home, they had already contacted CPS to come and get my grandson. But CPS told them that they was not coming to get my grandson, that it did not rise to the level of abandonment or abuse, and that they should just leave us alone. So, the sheriff's department, um, didn't have anybody to come get my child, my grandson. So, they allowed me to call someone to come and pick him up. Um, I contacted a family friend, they came and woke my baby up, because he was asleep, and they had to dress him, and when they took him out of the home, I was sitting on the couch, uh, between two police officers, I asked the police if I could please give him a kiss. They did allow me to zip up his coat and give him a kiss, and he began to cry, um, and they left, they took him outside. So, once they took him outside, um, they allowed me to put on, you know, some pants or socks and a shirt, um, and then they took me to jail. When they took me to jail, I got there at about maybe six, um, and they hadn't, the magistrate that signed my warrant was not supposed to come back until the next day. Well, I've always thought that if you get arrested on a Friday, you would at least go before a bond hearing or something the next morning, but not in my case. In my case, um, I was arrested at six, the female magistrate had twenty-four hours before my time was up to be processed, she came back the next day at 5:00 PM. So, I sat in jail for twenty-three hours, in a cell, all alone, on a concrete floor, with a paper thin mattress and one blanket full of hose. I refused to eat, they would come around and offer, you know, when they feed the other prisoners, I refused to eat anything, because I just knew that I would be another Sandra Bland, I would be reported that I died in police custody. So, for twenty-three hours, I didn't eat or drink anything, I just laid on that paper thin mattress in a fetal position and prayed, I just prayed to God the whole time. I had no concept of time, um, I just knew that I had been wrong. Uh, I got a, an attorney visit while in there, um, the black activist group, uh, my attorney in California reached out to an activist group, and they sent an attorney down there to post my bond. And, uh, but they had to wait, because they just knew that the judge was going to come in at a decent time on a Saturday, hm, not in my case, she didn't come in till 5:30. Once he came in, they posted my bond, and, uh, I was told by the person who posted my bond, that I should go on Monday and see a particular criminal attorney. I was charged with two, uh, two charges. I am now facing a felony, a felony three, uh, child endangerment, because I continued to send my grandson to school, so I am facing a felony three. And I'm also facing a perjury. Um, I've never perjured myself, I've never signed anything. I've never signed anything, um, under perjury. Um, I have no idea what, what this is all about.
Okay, 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 can I get a hold right there? Uh, when I read that about the perjury, uh, they got it out there, put it powerful. So I just wondering, and so you say you don't know what, you don't know what you did for them, and they got that online on you, that you perjured yourself and you don't know what you did? Or say it?
I know what they say that I did instead.
Okay. Okay, you can continue.
And I can't, I, I can't go into that.
Right, I know that, that's what I'm saying, go ahead. I know, right, I know that, I know, right.
Right. So that's one of the things that, that will be brought up in court.
Right.
But I would like you to know, sir.
Right.
That I did not perjure myself. I did not do any of the things that they're saying that I did as far as, um, perjuring myself without, how can I put this? School's knowledge.
Right, 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 right.
Anything that I did, I did with it. I did because I was instructed to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as Head Start is concerned.
Okay.
Let me say that.
Okay.
Um, my grandson is not kicked out of Head Start. According to Head Start, because Head Start is a government-funded program.
Mm-hmm.
According to Head Start, he's still enrolled. Um, I was supposed to send him to school every day, but Tatum I S D refused to allow him to go to school on their campus. Although it's a government-funded program and he's still enrolled, my question is, are they continuing getting the government funded for his, uh, enrollment?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, so I get out. Monday morning, I go straight to see this attorney that was referred to me. I speak to the man. He's a Caucasian, um, attorney. I speak to him in his office. And I think that it's a consultation. I think, you know, you get your free consultation. I didn't sign anything. I didn't give him, give him any money. When I concluded the meeting, he told me that he would call the D A to see where things stand. And that was the last time I heard from him. Um, my attorney in California contacted the D A's office and they didn't even have this paperwork. The sheriff's department hadn't even taken over the paperwork. And this is like two weeks later.
Hmm.
Um, I get a letter from this attorney that I spoke to that says I owe him seventy-five hundred dollars.
Hmm.
And I'm thinking, for what? Like, I haven't retained you. Why do I owe you? And according to him, he wants to call to the D A. And him and the D A worked out a deal that the D A would drop my charges. He's just not sure how to word it, where it doesn't piss off his constituents.
Hmm.
When I asked the man, well, wait a minute. You mean to tell me you make a phone call and it's seventy-five hundred dollars? He told me that if I didn't pay the seventy-five hundred dollars, he would sue me. And I'm like, wait a minute, I didn't retain you. I didn't, I, I, you know, I haven't given you any money. I've never signed anything. Um, this man is born and raised in the town where the D A is. Um, in my mind, the D A's couldn't have a problem dropping the charges. Simply say, no evidence.
Mm-hmm.
But to this day, I still have to report every Tuesday to a bail spokesman. I've never gotten any court papers in the mail. I've never gotten, um, a court date. I have not been indicted. I was just arrested. And it was simply due to harassment. They did not want me to protest at the home game. Um, and I believe that the D A and this criminal attorney that I was referred to is working together. I believe that he is waiting on me to pay this man seventy-five hundred dollars and then he'll drop the charges. But I don't have seventy-five, uh, I don't have seventy-five dollars as of today.
Okay, well, let, let, go ahead, go ahead. No, no, you go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that I don't owe him this money. He told me that it would be seventy-five hundred dollars if he had to fight the case. The case hasn't even been indicted. And this happened October twenty-fifth.
Okay, let, let me, let me back up for the record. I would like for you to, to say it again. First of all, they got you for, on a criminal trespass, which you didn't know what the hell was going on, right?
Yeah, right. They called me up to the school.
Right.
Didn't send my grandson to school on a school bus.
Okay, now I want you to state again, because you did it so perfectly. I just want you to do it again. I want you to mention that you didn't sign any paperwork. You were never served anything. You were never charged. Go through that pattern again, so, for, for the listeners.
Um, as far as the, uh, felony is concerned?
Yeah, uh, 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 the charges that they put on you and what you got to go, that, you know, to, to, um, to, uh, to serve this community or whatever, they didn't.
Sure. I was charged with, um, a felony three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it is child endangerment, because I continued to send him to school. Now, I'm not sure why sending your child to school is a form of endangerment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that is what I'm being charged.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm also being charged with a felony, um, because they have questions about my reg, my grandson's registration.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was, I was taken to jail.
Mm-hmm.
On October the twenty-fifth. As of today, I have not gotten any papers in the mail from the courts.
Yeah, that's what I want, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't gotten any papers in, from the courts. I have to report every Tuesday to a bail spokesman. I've asked him, has he received a court notice? My case doesn't even have a case number.
Wow.
It is simply to, uh, instill fear in me. And I do live in fear. I'm afraid that at any point, they're gonna knock at my door, because up until today, I've had two knocks. The first being CPS and the second being, uh, the police department who took me to jail. And so I do live in fear. I am a single black woman with a four-year-old grandson that's living in the deep south. I'm not from here. Um, they make it very known that I am not from here. And so my grandson doesn't have friends he can play with. They just had a Christmas program and they had a Christmas parade, where they had other small children in the parade. My grandson wasn't even allotted the opportunity to be a part of those festivities, because he is no longer a student at Tatum Independent School District, although he is still considered a student for the Head Start program.
Mm-hmm.
And he's been threatened. And that's on, and that is still on Facebook. Like, I went to the sheriff's department the day that this Caucasian thirty-five-year-old man threatened to shoot my grandson. I went to the police department at five in the morning. Um, I told the police. I also emailed the Facebook account and post to the detective. And they told me that they didn't find it a threat. They felt like he was just being silly or was, you know, he was just making a practical joke. Well, I didn't find it funny. The people that are supporting me didn't find it funny. They reached out to his job in the oil field. His job didn't find it funny. They fired him that day. But this young man just happens to be the son of the administrator for our only daycare, which is owned by the president of the school board.
Hmm. Wow, okay. So.
Yes, sir.
Uh, before I, there's another area I wanna hit before we close, but I wanna, but I wanna go through something else before I actually the last question. I wanna ask, and, and that is to go back and ask you some, some short question. Uh, how do you feel about your grandson having to deal with race, possible racism or racism at the age of four? How, how do you feel about that?
I am very troubled. I am very troubled that my grandson cannot embrace his identity. I am very troubled that what was God-given is being shown, that it's a problem. You know, um, my grandson's hair is all natural. He's not wearing braids or locks. It's all natural. Um, I owe it to my grandson. He's already been abandoned by his parents. And I owe it to my grandson to instill in him the value of life, how precious he is. Um, I want him to understand that he matters and that it does not matter his tone. I have a handsome chin that I recognize.
Yes.
And so he will not feel inferior to anyone. And he will not be made or asked to put on a dress by a white superintendent that I feel that wanted to demasculate my grandson.
Mm-hmm, okay. Uh, what, how do you feel about that criminal trespass? I, uh, now, first, let me, me inject this. I myself am under a six-year-and-a-half criminal trespass in my area here, because of, I'm me reporting the news. And so I'm not gonna get into that. So they use that tactic on many of us to get their way and do what they want. But how do you feel when you think about, I'm sure you had family members that have served in the armed forces, but to be charged with a criminal trespass when you are not doing anything? How do you think even members of your family would feel about you experiencing that when they've served, served this country so faithfully?
So it's funny you ask. My mother was, um, in the army. As a matter of fact, she was in the second class of black physician assistants in the United States Army. My mother served in nineteen fifty-seven.
Wow.
My father served in nineteen fifty-seven. And he was a part of the Air Force, where he was an Air Force policeman. So I am directly, I am directly offended. Uh, they used the criminal, they, they used not putting my grandson on the school bus, allowing me to become frantic and scared that something had happened to him. And to note that the police department and the school worked together in concocting, concocting a hoax, making me think he had been kidnapped, to get me to come up to the school, then to issue me a criminal trespass. You tell me to come get him. You tell me that you found him safe and to come and pick him up. And when I get there, you issue me a criminal trespass, because you don't wanna give me the proper documentation of why you're kicking him out? So you decide, the only way we're going to stop her from sending him to school is if we can stop her from coming on school grounds.
Okay.
I was mortified.
Right, and, and so based upon that, those three or four things that you just mentioned, right? And so then to go to jail, I can see, because I follow the Sandra Bland case too. And I can imagine, uh, how you felt, because people that have never been behind bars don't understand that you can't do anything and they can put in their law on you or what have you. So you had, you, you practically went through a nightmare, I think, about the Sandra, Sandra Bland case and by you being in this situation that you were in, correct?
Sir, I didn't practically go through a nightmare. I was going through a nightmare. Sandra Bland died here in Texas.
Right.
I am here in Texas. I am a black woman. When I look and think back to the video of her arrest, I wear locks. I am here. So I was not practically going through a nightmare. I know that you were just using that as.
I got you, I understand you.
I wanna make you, I want you listeners to understand, no, that was a nightmare.
Absolutely, you lived it, right.
A nightmare.
Okay. Uh, now, and, and you have to excuse me, but I'd like to ask the right question, because see, a lot of time, the news media, when you stand up and you do an interview, I tell black folks this all the time. You stand before the cameras and they'll give you an interview and they only publish on six o'clock news what they want you to have. Very seldom do they get to hear the complete story like you are doing today. But on my channel, this is what I do. I want you to tell the whole story and that's what you're doing, so people don't have to go out, you know, not understanding what's going on. So my question here is, did, first of all, are there any blacks on the school board?
The school board consists of a seven-person panel, five Caucasian, one male of mixed race. I wanna say he might be Hispanic and white.
Mm-hmm.
And one black.
Okay. Okay. Do they seem?
That was born and raised here.
Right, right, I got you. Uh, but during, it's two things now from that. Number one, is there anybody on the school board, as well as member of law enforcement, whether it's a city or county, to really seem to understand what you was going through? Did you see any sympathy at all directed your way? Because in a lot of cases that I go out in the field, uh, sometime they see it and sometime they don't.
Oh, no, sir. There's been no sympathy. There's been none. They feel as though I am causing, causing a problem in their town. I am shedding a light on their racist tactics. Um, you know, because of my arrest and because my grandson knew that I was being arrested, he is now in counseling. We're talking about a four-year-old baby that has to go to counseling. He becomes extremely, uh, upset and scared when I'm in one part of the house and he's in the other part. And I know you didn't ask this question, but I just wanna make sure that everybody understands how honest and transparent I am. I was having a meeting here in my home with the N double A C P. And my grandson was asleep. And when he woke up, he woke up screaming. Now, the N double A C P is sitting in my living room. My grandson is laying on top of my bed, which is right next to the living room. They witnessed him screaming. They saw me get up and go get him. And I had brought him back into the living room so I can conclude my meeting. And I asked him, why are you crying? In front of the N double A C P. And he said, because he thought I was in jail. Now, this is with other people in my home. So if I was lying, I would not, I would just say people. No, I'm telling you who it was. It was the president of the chapter, N double A C P here.
Right. Uh, if I may, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, there's a auto used car dealership in Douglas, Georgia, and the black one was going to pay a bill, her car payment. And the owner, I understand, came out with a weapon, pointed it at the mother with a four-year-old black boy in the car and a young, and a young lady. And I'm, I'm sharing this with you, because a lot of people, we gotta understand that our children need help and they need counseling, following these traumatic, uh, unnecessary conditions they force black people under. So to, to skip right along, when I went to interview them, uh, they wanted me to ask the four-year-old and this other girl, I think she was eight, what they experienced, because the mother and father told me that young, uh, girl woke up in the middle of the night screaming, don't shoot my mama, because she saw the gun pointing at her mama. And so, uh, these children, I threw that in to let you know, because I may put that clip right into this video too, because people need to understand that this is a real world situation. And because the news media will not publish the beef of the incidents that the children are facing with all of this racist, uh, regeneration of what we thought we had come through. And it's all coming up again. So I just wanted to share that with you. And I'm saying to you, you be encouraged to make sure that she gets some type of, um, I mean, he gets some type of counseling.
He goes to counseling right now. Um, and I just would like to extend my condolences to the other family that you were just talking about, because I know that that's real. See, before this, I would have just been like, oh, poor baby. No, I know what that young girl is going through, because I can't go to the restroom with the door closed. I have to leave my bathroom door open when I go to the bathroom, so that he knows that I'm in there. So I know that that's real.
Okay. Now, there's another question I wanna ask you, uh, and, and I'm, and we, we, we on good track. I figured this will be an hour. We're not gonna go over an hour. But what I wanted, and that was this, is that, uh, when I read about, you know, well, let me put it like this, let me, let me just ask you the question straight up. Why did you have those guns in your house?
Uh, uh, it's, okay, um.
Some people.
Two weeks before, two weeks before my arrest, there was, maybe two or three weeks, there was a post, like I said, by a man living here in Tatum, that he was going to shoot my grandson.
Right.
Um, the, the post didn't say that he was going to shoot him. What it says was, he holds an object, uh, in his hand, which is a form of deer urine. And here in the South, hunting is really big.
Right.
Well, the name of the company that makes the. Well, the name of the company that makes the deer urine is Tink's. Well, I call my grandson Tink. So he holds this deer urine up and he says, if you don't be quiet, we'll blast your ass. And the name is called Tink's. Well, I have a movement called The Village because I believe it takes a village.
Right.
But he personally addressed The Village. Now, that morning, I found out about it about two-thirty in the morning. About five o'clock, I went to the sheriff's department and reported it, like I said earlier in your interview. I emailed it to them so that they had a copy. The sheriff's department contacted me to say that they didn't find that a threat, that they felt like, you know, he was just blowing on people.
Mm-hmm.
And that they could not win the, to protect me because they didn't find it a threat.
Right.
So later that day, my son and I, my son was here from California. My son and I went to Academy Sports because I felt like if the police was not going to take it serious and protect myself and my grandson, I was more ready to.
Right.
So I went to Academy Sports and I purchased, uh, a few, a few weapons.
Yes, yes.
And, uh, ammunition.
Right.
I did.
Right.
And, um, I was, again, I live in the country, so in the country, you can shoot on your property.
Right, right.
So I started target shooting on my property. And the school, uh, my son was so proud of me because I was hitting my targets.
Right.
Talk about messing with my baby.
Right.
I'll make it work.
Right.
So my son had posted a video on Instagram.
Mm-hmm.
And all he says in the video is, look at my mama, I'm so proud of her. And the school saw the video. They contacted Children's Services and told Children's Services that they were afraid that we had weapons in the home with my grandson.
Hmm.
Uh, my grandson was at school when I was, when I went and bought the guns. He was at school when I was shooting.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that's when CPS went to the school to interview my, my grandson. And they found my grandson in distress and crying, sitting in a room. They left the school, came to my home, visited with me, took pictures, everything. They asked me to retrieve my gun. I, and there was two, uh, Children Protective Services officers that came. And I told them, no, I was not going to retrieve my gun. We would go, them and me, because I never wanted it to be said that I was got my gun alone.
Mm-hmm.
So both ladies got up and we walked into my bedroom where I retrieved my gun together. They took pictures of my gun. They took pictures of how it was, had a safety on it, how I had it locked away, how the key was not with it. And they considered the matter closed.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So that's before I had a weapon, because the sheriff's, sheriff's department was not gonna protect me and my, my son.
Right.
And my grandson.
Right, and, and you have a right to do that. Uh.
Yeah, and it's registered in my name.
Absolutely.
Period.
Okay, now, you mentioned earlier, as we, it brings us to a close. Uh, you mentioned a civil rights organization coming to assist you. What, what civil rights organ, if I may ask?
It's the ACLU.
Okay, I got them. I, I know it's online, I saw them online, yes.
Um, the NAACP?
Yes.
And, um, it started, when I first started this, I had gotten some attention from a organization in Georgia. But they dropped, uh, my case. I have not heard from them.
Okay. Okay, Georgia. The rea, the reason I ask is because, uh, uh, when I was in Douglas, I've been doing a lot of work up there, cause I got problems up there. And the National Action Network with Al Sharpton, uh, his representative came down, um, there. And so I want, hello?